Clear over here.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 22nd Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Mayor Kerkko, roll please.
Sure. Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson, excused. John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Present.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll have the minutes at our next meeting, so we'll jump right into our first item, which is our swearing in ceremony tonight.
I'm going to address them real quick.
Yep.
So after we get done with the swearing in, Mayor Gentry will do a short recess. And if you're participating in pictures, we're going to go to the room behind this council chambers and shut the door. So if you're taking pictures, we get recess, meet us in there, and we'll take pictures.
Chief Batts.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we're an enthusiastic group and ready to go. It's always an honor as the Fire Chief to get to do these swearing in ceremonies, to recognize our dedicated personnel that are ready to take the next step in their career. We have four tonight, and the first one that we have is Chris Perry. I'd like to bring Chris up and whoever's coming up with him. And as he and his family are making their way up, I'd like to talk a little bit about Chris. He is a seven-year veteran of LFD. He brings a strong work ethic and a sense of teamwork to any situation. For 2024, Lieutenant Perry bid on engine 212 on the A shift. The chiefs were very impressed with this because it took Chris out of his comfort zone, taking him to a different shift and a different engine. We look forward to seeing Chris's career advance through the years, and we're very proud of his accomplishments. Chris Perry.
Raise your hand, left hand of the Bible. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Perry.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, was not prepared for this, but I would like to thank the City Council and the mayor for entrusting me with this. Chief Batts and all of our admin staff have been an absolute, they've been great. They've been great mentors and coaches throughout my career. I also like to thank the C-shift in attendance tonight. It's been a really great four years with you guys, and I look forward to what's next. Thank you, guys.
Next, I would like to invite Alex Knip and his family up. Alex is a 10-year veteran of LFD. He was a part of the very first hiring class that I did as chief. Lieutenant Knip is a natural leader. His attitude and his ability to build shift continuity is on the next level. Alex has had a great tenure as a ride-out officer. I have always said, you can never have too many Alex Knips on your team. I know it will be a while, and he's not going to like that I say this, but hopefully at some point in his career that he'll be interested in being administrative chief because I think it would be a great fit for Alex. Alex Knip.
I state your name.
I, Alex Knip.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances of the city of Lebanon.
And all laws and ordinances in the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As lieutenant of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Chief Batts, Chief Young, and Chief Henderson for this, or Hendricks for this opportunity. Also like to thank my family for all their love and support. Also like to thank a few mentors along the way that have helped me out. Chief Young, Chief Dickerson, Chief Lee, Chief Shepherd, and Chief Hendricks for all their help. Without you guys, I wouldn't be here. And just want to say congrats to Chief Waring and Chief Baird for you guys' retirement. Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite Jason Adams and family up. Jason Adams is an 11-year veteran of LFD. Jason is currently a lieutenant and is being promoted to the rank of captain. Captain Adams is a versatile leader, and he brings a very professional demeanor to any role that he has served. Jason is one of our call-out fire investigators and public information officers. Captain Adams can always be counted on for his dedication, and his dedication is second to none. It's my hope that one day he will have an interest in becoming administrative chief. And they always frown at me when I say that, but I look at our future leaders, and I know what I like. And Captain Adams does an amazing job.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jason Adams.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a captain of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As a captain of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I've had the honor of being on A shift for the last 10 years. I was the longest-tenured A shift personnel, and now I get to go on to a new adventure with C-shift, working with new individuals and some of our younger personnel. So I'm excited for that, thankful for the council, for the mayor, definitely all of our administrative chiefs, including chiefs, retiring chiefs, Baird and Wary, for all of their support and help to develop me over the years. So thank you all.
Very excited and proud of the father. Next, I would like to invite Matt Young and family to the podium. Captain Matt Young is being promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief of Operations. He is an 11-year veteran of LFD. Matt is a legacy firefighter for the city of Lebanon. His grandfather, Roy Young, served 33 years. Roy, raise your hand for us. Many of those 33 years as deputy chief. Matt's father, Mike, served as firefighter engineer for seven years. Chief Roy Young's career was steeped in dedication to the city of Lebanon. Chief Matt Young has excelled at being a firefighter, and he's learned these very important principles from his grandfather, Chief Young. He has served the roles and ranks of Public Information Officer, ropes instructor, call-out fire investigator, honor guard commander, lieutenant, and captain. I have no doubt he will bring that vigor to the role of the deputy chief of operations. Matt Young.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matt Young.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a deputy chief of the Lebanon Fire Department.
As a deputy chief of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I have to lower the microphone a little bit further than the rest of the guys. Thank you, Chief Batts, Mayor Gentry, and members of council. It's an incredible honor to be standing before you this evening, and I couldn't be here without the love and support of my family and without the brotherhood of our firefighters. We are extremely fortunate in this city to have a group of the most dedicated and skilled firefighters in the profession. And as deputy chief, it's my solemn vow to do everything in my power to ensure that they have the support, the resources, and the training that they need to be successful and to go home safely at the end of the day. Thank you very much. As the Fire Chief of the city of Lebanon, I could not be more proud of our department and our staff, our upcoming company officers, our chief officers. The next three to four years for Lebanon Fire is going to be huge with building of a new fire station, purchasing of a new engine, and just moving the department forward. And we have the right people in the right spots, and I'm just so very proud. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Before we recess and allow everyone to leave that doesn't want to stay, far really exciting agenda tonight, I will say. I won't be offended, I guess. But I just want to say, on behalf of the city, I want to express my appreciation that, you know, you heard how many years of service all these individuals have. So really just honored that you made that commitment to serve this community. We're humbled by that. We know, all of us up here understand that, you know, you guys put your lives on line for us constantly, and so all of our citizens are thankful for that. And we just wish you all the best in your new leadership roles. And also, just remember too, that you have people that are younger firefighters looking up to you now, right? So you have to step into that role model and be that. You know, partly why you're in your new role is because you're already all that role model, but now you got, now you're official, and you really will have people looking at you. So wish you all the best, congratulations, and we will stand and recess until the fall of gavel. All right, we will re-adjourn. Our guests are being nice and quiet outside, so we'll be able to start this off now. So move on to old business. First item up is a fiscal plan for the annexation of 510 North 300 West. Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Sorry, this is Resolution 2024-05.
Just go over this quickly. For those who were on the council last year, and we had a couple of new members this year, but this fiscal plan was drafted in December for a series of Leap District annexations we did, and the property that's being annexed now was included in that fiscal plan. So this plan was actually adopted already once in December, but I went back and realized that the resolution didn't reference this property, so we want to go ahead and update the, do a new resolution associated with this property and readopt this fiscal plan associated with 510 North 300 West. So if we'll go ahead and bring up the screen, I'll just walk through a couple of pages. I'm actually towards the back in the appendices. Here's the parcel list, just to highlight, a series of parcels, and the last one on the list is the Hilligoss property with a net assessed value of about $96,000. So that would be the assessed value upon annexation to the city. And then what the fiscal plan does then as part of an annexation, it evaluates based on the annexation properties what the additional services or costs might be upon annexation. So for example, how many more streets are being annexed that we'll have to plow and maintain? How many more miles of roads are our police officers going to have to patrol and those sorts of things? So in the case of this property, and you'll see it here in a second, the property there, it's a less than one acre piece of property, so the additional costs are negligible, almost zero just because of this property being annexed. So there's a very, very small amount of cost associated with the annexation of this property. And then also, the other part of the fiscal plan is then to look at the positive side, or at least the revenue generated to the city. And so this, this is a chart that you see here that shows future estimates of assessed value to the city, and then also what it does for the property tax levy and the property tax rate. So this, again, as I mentioned, this is the accumulation of all of the properties. So what this shows you is that year 2025 paid 2026, the additional assessed value of the annexed territories is about 850,000 total, 96,000 of which is the property that's up for annexation this evening. What that does in terms of, here's the estimated assessed value of the city, about 1.5 billion, and then when you add that additional 150,000, 1.502 billion estimated property tax levy, which by the way, property tax levies are calculated by the DLGF based on a growth rate factor. So those are a set number. As you can see here in item number four, it assumes controlled levy increases 4%. Some years, 4.9% for 2026. So those, those are calculated by DLGF. And so what happens then is if your assessed value of the city is increasing more than that property tax levy that's calculated by DLGF, then you can see here what happens is the estimated property tax rate actually goes down. And that's what you see happening here in this chart in the last one. So, so in terms of looking forward, in terms of the assessed values, and what this shows you is that our assessed value is increasing faster than the property tax levy based on that, that annual growth factor calculated by the DLGF. So that in essence is what happening is in that math equation, our property tax rate decreases as a result of those increased assessed values. Let me see. Here then is a summary of the additional costs associated with all of these annexation territories. So again, there's, this includes about seven or eight other properties. So you can see the estimates are primarily related to street and police department. Street is just, they have a unit price for materials, supplies, and repairs. Same with police for fuel and repairs based on additional street mileage. So you can see here the total costs associated with the annexations in total are ranged from 400 to 450 dollars per year associated with these annexations. So this is not a significant acreage we're bringing in, so we're just seeing these small numbers here. And then the last chart then shows the summary of net impacts. You can see those additional costs, they start in 2024 because that's when the annexation's effective. And as we all know, with, we're always a year in arrears as it relates to the property tax collection, so we wouldn't see an assessment until 2025 and taxes paid in 2026. So there's a couple of years where we'll have about a $400 cost to the city, and then once the revenue kicks in in 2026, there's two components to that. One's a property tax levy increase, these years about $4,800, and the other one's related to street mileage, about another $425 you see there. So you can see then the net impact becomes positive pretty quickly in 2026, once we start generating revenue related to property taxes. So that's a quick overview of the fiscal plan.
Hey, Ben, just to clarify, so the assessed value for this property was about 10% of the overall for the last, for the fiscal plan of all of them?
Yes.
So fair to assume it's about $40 is the additional cost to the city?
Probably.
Estimated?
Roughly, they show the map up here, you can see here, here's the property. So there, I mean, there's a little bit of road length that's associated with it because it's a corner lot. At most, it's $40 at most, I would guess. Yeah, so that, that total cost is roughly 10% of that total or about $40.
Yep, just wanted to put in real numbers, that's all.
Yep.
Yep. Questions from the board, or from the council for Ben on that?
[inaudible]
Okay, Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Resolution 2024-05 is a resolution establishing a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory to the city of Lebanon, whereas the areas to be annexed are described in Exhibits A and B. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council is required to adopt a written fiscal plan prior to the passage of an annexation ordinance 2024-01. The required fiscal plan attached as Exhibit C has been prepared and presented to this council. The fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with the requirements Indiana law. Therefore, be it resolved, this council hereby approves the fiscal plan for the areas sought to be annexed.
Thank you, Rob. Resolution's been read. Is there any public comment at this time concerning Resolution 2024-5?
Rob, I do have a question for you. So when it comes to these super voluntary annexations, when they're 100% of the property owners requesting to be annexed, is there any legal basis that as a city, we could not approve an annexation?
Great question, putting me on the spot, Mayor.
Sorry.
Typically, no. I mean, we had, certainly we haven't taken that position in years past. When it's 100% voluntary, I am not aware of any challenges that have been out there, but I think at times, you know, certainly it can be challenged.
So barring some fiscal plan that says it's going to bankrupt the city by annexing this property, there isn't really a...
Yeah, maybe not legal, from the legal perspective, from the financial perspective, if this showed that the revenue was a certain amount, and then the costs associated with that were 10 times that amount, that might potentially be a basis to, to not approve an annexation, but that's, that's really, on a super voluntary annexation, that's one of the few things you would see why a council may choose not to. It's, it's pretty rare, though, where you would have a significant cost associated with something that didn't also have revenue to match.
Thank you, Ben. And Rob. Any other questions from council for that? This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2024-05.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved, I'm slightly, thank you, council. All right, and since now we've adopted the fiscal plan, we can move on to the, yeah, why'd you go sit down, Ben? What are you doing?
I shouldn't have sat down.
Yeah. Now that we adopted the fiscal plan, we can move on to the actual second reading of the ordinance, which is Ordinance 2024-01. Council's considering annexation of 510 North 300 West. This ordinance is on second reading as well. Ben.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just a quick recap here, because we talked about this at the last meeting. This is an annexation request that came to us from the property owner, Preston Hilligoss. It's 510 North 300 West. On the map here, you can see this property, it's a little less than one acre. This is just southwest of the curve in State Road 32, as you're heading west out of town. So again, this was requested by the property owner, it came to us and requested the annexation. So just a quick refresher of the process, this is a process that begins at the Plan Commission. They hold a public hearing related to the zoning to assign to the property. In this case, let's see, I haven't pulled it up yet. Then the Plan Commission reviewed this, and based on the comprehensive plan, land use designation, if it comes up. You may have to take my word for it if it doesn't come up. There we go. So this property is located, here's the curve in State Road 32, so it's located right in here or smack in the middle of the Leap Innovation District designation. So based on that, in terms of the UDO, it recommends that the Plan Commission review, if there's not a plan or development proposed, either the base zoning district, which is a residential classification, or some zoning classification that represents the future land use as proposed in the comprehensive plan. So in this case, because it's proposed in the Leap Innovation District, the Plan Commission did offer a recommendation for the Leap zoning district for this annexation territory, and that comes to you with an ADO recommendation. And again, this is 100% voluntary annexation, we're on second reading of that annexation ordinance. And that's a quick recap for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben from the council?
Okay.
Rob, have you read it?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Ordinance 2024-01 again concerns 100% voluntary annexation, whereas 100% of the owners of the parcels identified in Exhibits A and B have filed a voluntary petition with this council pursuant to Indiana law. Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on December 18, 2023, and forwarded docket 23-82 to this council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the Leap Innovation District Plan Unit Development Zoning Classification. This council conducted a public hearing at its last meeting on January 8, 2024. This council just adopted the fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area. The annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law. Therefore, this council finds that the annexation area, again, generally located at 510 North 300 West and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the northern and eastern boundaries of the annexation area, is declared annexed to and declared a part of the city of Lebanon. It's further to include the contiguous public highways and rights-of-ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the area pursuant to Indiana law. It's assigned council District 2, and it is again assigned the Leap Innovation District Plan Unit Development Zoning Classification, and will be in full force in effect pursuant to any applicable waiting periods.
Thank you, Rob. The ordinance has been around second reading. Is there any public comment concerning ordinance? Any council discussion? Questions, comments? Okay. Would then entertain a motion concerning Ordinance 2024-01.
Make a motion, we approve Ordinance 2024-01.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Keith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That ordinance is approved, I'm slightly, thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from the council? Okay, new business then. These were Dick's items, but Keith, do you want to talk about these, or was it Sierra? I can't remember.
I can.
Okay, well, I can introduce it. Okay, so I guess, so every year, right, we have terms on our various boards and commissions for the city. And periodically, those terms expire as the year goes through. And one of the council appointments to the Planning Commission is Councilman Campbell. And then also, a council appointment, Brian Tandy, as well. So Dick had me put these on, I guess Dick spoke to both of them and said they were willing to continue on those boards. Obviously, I think Keith does a great job of the Planning Commission for us and seems to enjoy it. So with that, if there's any discussion concerning those appointments or entertain a motion concerning those? Yes?
Was this advertised position for anybody else to...
So the council appointments are handled by the council president, and so I think Dick defaulted to contact the current sitting appointees to see if they wanted to continue in those roles. And when they both said yes, then they decided to put them on the agenda for this. But, but if there is, if there's a vacancy, it's kind of, it's handled, people do reach out and say if anybody is interested, and they can, we don't post it per se, like a job posting, but certainly people can solicit names and say they're interested as those come up. Yep.
Make a motion, we approve the reappointment of Keith Campbell and Brian Tandy.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Those are approved. And then we'll have some more of those come up throughout the year. Some of them are staggered, so I think there's some more coming up in April, but we'll have to, for BZA as well, too. So we'll, we'll, I'll let Dick know if you guys want to talk about those more in the future, so. All right, next item will be Ordinance 2024-02, which is a unified development ordinance and zoning map. This is on first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Introduced here in a second, our consulting team is going to do a majority of the presentation, but I'll do a quick intro here as soon as I pull up the presentation. but I'll do a quick intro here as soon as I pull up the presentation. All right, thank you, Mayor. What we're going to do here tonight is introduce this project to you, and then take any comments or questions, you have them, and then in terms of process, again, this is one that is an ordinance, so it would take two readings. So what we're going to do actually is give you a month to review this after this presentation for two reasons, because it's a four-hundred-page document, and also because I won't be here at the next meeting, so we'll give you a little bit extra time for a couple of reasons there to go through everything, and then we'll be looking for adoption then in the second reading in February. So this process, we, is, was an update to our Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map, and our Unified Development Ordinance is essentially the, the law as it relates to development and zoning for the city. It identifies zoning for properties, the designation of zoning, uses that are permitted, how development can occur in what way, and then sets up processes and procedures for our office in order to handle those things. And so over the last few years...
Hey, Ben, I'm sorry, before we get too deep, when was our last UDO update?
Two thousand and seven, I think, I think it was adopted in early two thousand and eight, so it's about fourteen, fifteen years old.
Thank you.
The previous from that, I think, was right around two thousand, so we've, it's, it's had a good run here, and frankly, the use of UDO was working very well. We had just discovered some, some process and procedures could use some updating, there are some places where there was duplicative information, there are some places where there was conflicting information, so as we were evaluating this with our consultant, the first thing they did was, do we just want to do a minor update to the existing text? And as we started really getting into it, we realized, no, I think this is, this is substantial enough that we want to just go ahead and just do an overhaul of the entire ordinance and zoning map, so the reason, reason being is, is there's, there's obviously a lot happening in the community over the last few years, and as we're applying the ordinance to those things, we recognize where there's things that just aren't working quite the way we want them to, we've recognized there are ways we can make our processes more efficient, and there are places where we really wanted to strengthen the language so we could enforce it better. So some, some of the reasons, I guess, if they want to go and pull the screen up, we can kind of look at this here, why, again, as why up that we wanted to align it with our comprehensive plan, which is, was just adopted in two thousand nineteen, or two thousand and nineteen, so it's a few years old, we wanted to make sure it updates so it would align with the comprehensive plan. That being said, we're getting ready to also update our comprehensive plan as well, because there's a lot that's happened over the last few years, and we want to make sure we address those things appropriately in the comprehensive plan, and really do have a forward-looking document that addresses those things. So we really wanted to make sure to align with the comprehensive plan, and then with, with just the fact that we're growing, growing as much as we are, we want to make sure we have a really good ordinance to allow us to really address what's happening, make sure we're managing everything appropriately, make sure we're getting good quality projects for the city. And really, the existing UDO is somewhat insufficient for that, and we want to make sure we had appropriate updates to make sure that we could really do those things. So in terms of the process, we started this a little over a year ago. HWC was our consultant, and you can see the team all hanging out back here, that had the lovely responsibility of writing a four-hundred-page Unified Development Ordinance for us and updating a zoning map. So we started that process a little over a year ago, really did a really fine-tooth audit of our existing UDO, talked about what our, what our challenges have been, what our opportunities are moving forward, and really then started digging into the text of the UDO and where we, we had some challenges, what we wanted to update, and, and over the course of a year, yes, it did take that long to really get through this text, multiple refinements, I think I've read it five different times and came up with fifty comments every time, so it's something that's constantly evolving. And so the, the first step of the process then, once we finalize that document, the zoning map, is it goes to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission is the first step in the process associated with it, and they reviewed the UDO text, the draft, and the zoning map, and at their last meeting, they did recommend favorably for the updated UDO and zoning map, and forwarded that to the common council with that favorable recommendation by an eight oh vote. So just quick, quick, over read the process, and then in terms of the process for the council, what the ordinance suggests is that we need to first repeal the existing ordinance and then replace it with the new ordinance and zoning map, so that's essentially the technical process that's outlined in that ordinance to repeal that existing ordinance and replace it. With that, then, introduce Brian, and he's going to go through some...
Ben, before we hand over to Brian, touch on, because you've been planning director now for...
About seven years.
Seven years now?
Yeah.
Give me some examples for the council, because again, they're not living and breathing this every day like you are, give me some examples of, of things we run into, big tripping points, I mean, obviously, the markets changed a lot since two thousand and seven, pre-recession, all that time, right? So like, why, like, why is our current UDO maybe not, has not kept up, or where are we stumbling, and how have we been addressing that, or are we trying to avoid going forward?
Yeah, so, so some of it was just a duplication of information we needed to clean up, other things were, the, the way it's written now, and the way we have to apply it to projects, it always results in variance requests, so the Board of Zoning Appeals agendas are inundated with, with the same types of applications every month, because the way it's written just doesn't really work in the real world. For example, there's places where there's a landscape buffer required, then there's parking lot landscaping required, then there's another buffer required, and they all stack on top of each other, so you end up with like thirty trees and a hundred shubs every hundred feet, and it's just not, there's no way that that's going to even be possible, so it's really just trying to clean up things like that. The other big thing that we really noticed is that more recently, especially when you've got larger residential product, projects, they're wanting to do multiple product types in there, and the product types may be different sizes, they may have different lot sizes and other elements like that, and what happens is anytime they want to do something like that, we don't have one residential zoning district that accommodates all of those products. So what happens is every development comes as a plan unit development, which is not a, not a problem until you get on the back end, and when somebody calls me and says, I need to know what my site setback is in Cedar Ridge, and then we have to go look it up in the PUD, specific PUD ordinance for that neighborhood, rather than just saying, oh, it's five feet because you're in this zoning district. So we end up with a whole bunch of ordinances, one for every neighborhood that we have to track, as opposed to just being able to, and this is one thing that Brian will go through here in a second, being able to allow residential zoning districts to have multiple product types within them, so that we just have a straight zoning development, as opposed to having to do a PUD every time that we have to track all of them. We probably have over, probably a dozen residential PUDs just in like the last five years, and so we have to track each one of those individually, every time a project comes in, or a new house comes in, we have to, we have a checklist for every neighborhood, and we got to track each one of them individually, so that's a big thing. There's a number of other things that Brian will go through, we strengthen our code enforcement ability to do property maintenance, that was a big one, right now, it was really just weeds and grass, and we wanted to make sure that other landscaping had to be maintained based on industry standards, so if you got overgrown shrubs, you have to trim them, we didn't have the ability to tell somebody to do that now. So a lot of strengthening there in the code enforcement section, but there's a lot of little things, I would say there are hundreds of little things, but there's some big things in process. One of the other things we did on the development plan process, right now, it requires a public hearing for everything that goes through a development plan process, and in some cases, like one I just had a call on this morning, it's a five-thousand-square-foot expansion to a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, and the way it's written now, that has to go to a public hearing, where nobody's going to come to, because nobody cares about a five-thousand-square-foot expansion on a big industrial building, so it allows for some administrative approvals for some of those real simple, straightforward development plans. They have, still have to meet all the requirements, but it just doesn't have to have that additional step of going to a public hearing for something that, that's a fairly straightforward deal, so. And then in terms of design for residential neighborhoods, we, we wrote standards to allow for greater flexibility and greater creativity, I think, in design, trying to get, trying to encourage our residential development partners to really think outside the box in terms of how they develop neighborhoods, so there's a lot of, a very, a lot of various things we wanted to try to address, but it was a lot of little things that really just added up, to the point it just made sense for us to do some wholesale changes.
Ben, you mentioned something about you changed a little thing for landscaping?
Yeah.
Go further than that with like this regular landscaping requirements, you and I have talked before, I've always felt like it was required to have too many plants.
Yes, that was, that was the big thing, is, is we eliminated some of the, some of the way that they, they built on top of each other, so right, whereas now you might have to do three different landscaping requirements on the same spot, now we made sure that there was just one requirement for that spot, so just bases you just said, as opposed to having like thirty trees, now we'll just have eight or something like that, something that's more appropriate for the area. So yes, that was one of the big things, is trying to clean that up a little bit and streamline it.
I'm glad to see that, and for those who are watching at home, we love plants, but when a building is built and they plant ten thousand plants, sometimes they'd always, they'd always take care of them.
Yeah.
It's tough, it's tough to take care of them.
Yeah, there's, there's some maintenance challenges there, but the big thing is just, you kind of look at it constructively, and you're like, there's no, there's no reason for there to be that much landscaping there, and that's why we have a lot of variances to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, because you look at it constructively and you realize that this, this just doesn't make sense the way it's written, but that's the way it's written, so we have to go through that process, so this will streamline that a little bit and make it a little more, little more common sense approach to landscaping in some cases.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben before we really dive into it?
I guess I have one more big picture question. So you mentioned the, a lot of this is to allow more creativity, flexibility, mixing product types and same development. Is that a bigger trend we're seeing in the housing market versus the pre-recession? I mean, talk, talk maybe a little about why we're seeing more of that?
Yeah, I think some of it is that developers are looking for a larger site where they can mix those product types, and what they're looking at is, is what's the absorption rate? So if they're, if they're looking at one product type, they may be able to build twenty of them a year based on what they're seeing in the market. If they have a second product type, they might also be able, if it's in a different price category or a bit different type, like say you got single-family homes and town homes, then look at saying, okay, we can build both of those at the same time, because we can still build those twenty single-family homes, but now we can also absorb ten town homes in that same neighborhood during the same calendar year. So they're really looking at the markets and what the absorption rates are for various product types, and mixing them allows them to maybe build more in a shorter timeframe, which is good for them, they're carrying costs, they're able to, to pay those off sooner than they would otherwise, so that's a big thing, and in some cases, if it's a twenty or thirty-acre site, they're really just looking at one, one product type, but it seems like a lot of them, again, are looking for larger acreage, so that they can bring multiple product types in to address some of those absorption rates of those different products.
Okay. Brian?
Good evening, I'm Brian Stumpf with Civic Blueprint, I was happy to help the city in creation of the UDO. With me this evening is Rachel Christensen as HWC, and Laney Stumpf with Civic Blueprint. So it's been a pleasure working through, updating the, the UDO. We, it's funny, when we began this process, LEAP wasn't even on the radar yet, and so you can imagine the changes that happened in the adjustments that we made through the process. While Ben provided the kind of big picture, I'll, I'll go through the ordinance just briefly, identifying each chapter and some key points out of those chapters. The organization of the UDO itself is designed to be very sort of intuitive. It begins, when, when people come to see Ben, they're asking one of, there's usually one of two things, I'm a business that does X, what district do I need to be in, or where can I locate, or hey, I'm here, I'm zoned this, what can I do with my property? That's how a lot of the discussions start. So are the ordinances set up to address those districts and those uses upfront, and then get into the development standards, and then down into the approval process that might be necessary? And we addressed this with a lot, one of our key focuses was on streamlining the document, there's a lot of duplication, there's an element of Easter egg hunt, even as we're going through the ordinance, we're finding a landscaping piece over here somewhere that that just didn't make sense, so we've been able to sort of herd those cats, simplify it, we pride ourselves that we put the ordinances in plain English, they need to be accessible to everyone, you won't find a "shall" in the document at all. And the other thing that we're very proud of is that the ordinance, the city will have Word files, so I encourage you, and encourage Ben, as we go through the year, identify, hey, this isn't working right, and just do, there'll be little minor things, as good as we are, there's going to be little things we'll need to tweak, and so by having the Word documents, the city can easily update that. Right now, you don't have that ability, so we're going through, here's the UDO, plus here's these different revisions that have been ad hoc made, but they haven't been able to be incorporated into the UDO, so this will keep the UDO current and fresh. Going to the screen, so Chapter one is the general provisions, admittedly not a very exciting chapter, but it's the legal foundation for the ordinance, and this is where we also identified the non-conforming uses and rules for those uses that don't fit the, the new ordinance. I will say with the, while we've changed the names of the zoning districts and things, when we've updated the map, we put everything in its proper district. Our goal is that everything should be, to our best of our ability, it should be a conforming use within the city. Chapter two is where we really get into sort of the meat of it, these are where we establish the different zoning districts and the standards in those districts, we simplified the districts, probably the biggest revamp in here was the change to the residential districts, and I'll, I'll touch upon those in a moment, but currently, the residential districts are very siloed, single families here, this is a single family, then we have multifamily. It doesn't talk a lot about other building types that we're seeing nowadays that are in demand, and it has a lot of siloing, where we pull together a little bit of a blend. The other thing I'll point out, and this is really unique to Lebanon, and frankly, it was really fun to write, is we have a recreation overlay, so on the trails that are on the thoroughfare plan, our, our big regional trail, like Big Ford Trail, we have an overlay that, that lays on top of that, that allows the, the possibility of doing some small, either sales or retail that's oriented towards the trails, so you have like a small bike shop or bike rental, or you could have like an ice cream shop, coffee shop, things of that nature, that would go through and be approved by the Plan Commission, so there's a public hearing process for that, but it, it's really going to be something that can, I believe will provide some really unique opportunities in Lebanon. No one else, we, we help communities across the state, no one else has anything like that, so I think that'll be a real, be fun to see the, the fruits of that. So the zoning districts, this map, this is sort of a conversion chart, where we had different alphabet soups and things, now we're R-one to R-six on the residential, I'll step into that a little bit deeper as far as what exactly that means, but you'll see a lot of the, the neighborhood business and things, we tried to, that your planning business, commercial and planning business offices are very similar, those have now combined to be general business, and likewise, we've tried to keep things very straightforward and linear, we still have a, a PUD process, but, but one of the things that Ben mentioned, our goal is to really minimize PUDs. PUDs should be for either a, a huge project that is character building and like establishes a character for the community, or you have really odd constraints on the site, where there's just something that, prime example, Emma says, well, Brian, we're, we're, somebody wants to do a tiny home village, how would that get approved? That's a great candidate for a PUD, where they get to write their own standards. What we don't want to see PUDs used for is when someone is just trying to put different sizes of single-family homes in the same neighborhood, or possibly town homes and single-family homes together. Having been in Ben's shoes before, it is difficult, because you want to provide good customer service, and someone calls in with what they think is a simple question of what's my setback, and you can't tell them, you have to go look it up and, and come back to them. So one of the things that we've done is we've regulated the residential districts by density rather than lot size. Currently, you are regulating by lot size, so in the different residential districts, you have to have a certain amount of square footage, as it is today. We're kind of flipping the script on that a little bit, and from that, you would get so many homes on a piece of property. From that, we're saying, no, no, our top line is, you're going to have so much density you're allowed, and that we're going to give you flexibility in how you choose to arrange those homes on the site. So in this example, we've got a hypothetical ten-acre site that's got woods on it, by using a minimum lot size approach, as your current ordinance does, the lots end up taking up, you know, you're going to put as many lots in there as you can, because there's economics of a site, and you end up losing the trees, some of the things that provide character, and all the homes are the same. What the new UDO does is allows flexibility in the lot sizes, and so you can choose to put those on, as you see on the right, you can choose to put them on smaller lots, save the trees, have different, use different products. That's not required, you, if you still want to do big lots, great, go for it, but we are providing that flexibility for how you can, other ways to arrange that. So some real-life examples of these, so on the left, you'll see minimum lot size, and it results in sameness, all the lots are the same size, and as Ben mentioned, you have a single price point. Believe me, right now, there is a demand across all price points for housing, and so why, why are you getting more requests today for a blend of homes? Because there's opportunities for homes at different price points? Another key, key thing is that we don't live the same, our households are different, demographics, you know, where we, preferences can change, demographics don't, they, they tell the truth, and if the sort of traditional family with kids is a much smaller portion of households today, we have a lot of older people, people, a lot of single-person households, more so than we've ever had in the past, and that, there's just a desire for a different style of living. So back, back to the picture, you'll see where it's all the same, same-sized lots, on the right, by providing that flexibility, you see mixed lot sizes, and even mixed product, over towards the right of that, the image on the right, you'll see some town homes and some things, what that allows is then allows the common areas with some of the walks and things of that nature. Another example is here, where on the left, we've got same lot size, and open space becomes an afterthought, because again, we're trying to get a certain number of homes on the site, And the image on the right, you'll see where the homes were put on small lots in order to save the trees that were there on the site. So you get, you're able to have common areas that help maintain the character of the community, the things that make that site special. So we have now gotten rid of the different alphabet soups and just went to a simple R1 to R6. R1 is a low-density, single-family home, single-family detached home only. R6 is your, your most intense district, and that will be apartment buildings and things. And as you see on this scale here, we, as we go up in intensity in the residential districts, that's where we begin to phase in these other products, either duplexes, bungalows, townhomes, things of that nature that allow that range, that you can do those by right. So currently, every, all those different things are siloed in different residential districts. You have to have multiple zonings and things of that nature. When you look at the development standards table, so here, that very top line, maximum density. So now R1, we've given a number, 1.75 units per acre. That's the maximum density in that R1 district. It's essentially equivalent to what you have today, and then the lot size requirements and home size requirements in that. And you'll see as we move across into the R2 and R3, the density slowly notches up. And then we add in, begin to feather in two-family homes. So example, in the R2 district, two-family homes or duplexes could be permitted as with a conditional use approval. In other words, the Board of Zoning Appeals would look at it and say, based on that site and based on those conditions, yes, it would be okay to do that. And as you get into more intense districts, you'll see those additional residential options sort of feathered in. Chapter 3 is the permitted uses. This is where we address the different uses in the districts and what type of approval. Are they permitted by right? Is there a conditional use approval that's required? And then one of the things we do, like to make sure all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted, is we actually put our parking standards on the use table. So often, we deal with ordinances where here's our permitted uses, and there's nothing in the parking standards that address that use. So we've done that. All the standards are linked on that table, so all the uses have descriptions. One of the other things we often find is that, well, here's this use, what defines that? We have those defined, and if there are particular uses or conditions on that, such as they should be so far away from a residential district, that's actually part of the conditions for that use. And what that does is that takes away from having to either go to the BZI and get a variance or some of these things. Here are the standards for those uses and the conditions where they're allowed. The other thing we've added was mobile merchant standards. Knowing that we're getting into festivals and things of that nature, there's a way that we can address food trucks and temporary sales as part of those. That's a new use that's on the use table. This here is just one page or a portion of a page out of the permitted use table. So you can see that Ps are permitted by right, C are conditional uses. And in the far-right column, you'll see the parking requirements. So we address those different uses and have provided great flexibility. We don't try and name every single use. We don't try and name habitations and things like that. But we do have a spot for identifying these uses as well as a process for identifying where those things need to go. Chapter 4, you just got done doing the LEAP district. It's its own, that ordinance is essentially put straight into Chapter 4 here with putting it in plain English and giving it the "shall's" to make sure it unifies. But this is the LEAP district that you recently adopted. Chapter 5, we joke, it's the regulations apply to everything. This is your design and maintenance. Really, some of the highlights of this chapter are the property maintenance standards. As Ben mentioned before, it was just grass. This is something we've been doing in more and more communities, identifying and putting in the zoning ordinance, the elements for property maintenance so that there can be an enforcement tool. And so that, we're looking at the ways that the, so often planning in zoning is dealing with future uses, but there's also a current use and how do we handle nuisances and elements that, property maintenance being a big one. So we've got standards in there that can be used. Design review, I'll touch upon here in a moment. We also added short-term rental standards. While the state identifies pretty clearly, you know, what you can and can't do for short-term rentals, we want to make sure that if that happens here, we've got some regulations and some registration that goes along with that so the city can know where those are happening. Chapter 6, these are the improvement standards, the stuff that gets put in on the site. We call this our zoning Big Four. It's our landscape, lighting, parking, and signage. We've worked very diligently on making sure that it's clear and straightforward and addressing the landscape standards so that we're not having too many trees trying to be in the same spot, addressing buffers so that we have, you know, can address potentially incompatible uses, lighting standards that are respective of neighbors and try not to have light trespass. And then parking and signage, signage is legal now. With court cases and things that have gone through, we've had a lot of changes in how you can call signs and how you regulate signs. We've now made sure that you've got a sign ordinance that's legal. Chapter 7 is your subdivision regulations, so anything dealing with the splits of land. We've simplified the ordinance currently. We've got, the current UDO has had different types of subdivisions. Subdivision is a process, and we identify ways that that can happen. We also, in this chapter, have architectural standards for residential, commercial, industrial, and then development standards for, for the different types of development. One thing I'll point out in the architectural standards, the architectural standards in a nutshell, we want variety and we want great quality and good variety. Often, when we require like a certain amount of brick, we say 50% of the front has to be brick. Well, that all of a sudden begins to create the monotony and harms the diversity. So in here, we have requirements for the architectural diversity along the street. So you can't have the same elevation next to another elevation. You've got to mix the color palette, things that way. For the building itself, no beige boxes. So we require articulation in the building itself so that there's articulation to the building. And then on the exterior, we require exterior varieties. So it has to be three different colors, materials, patterns, textures, something to provide interest. And then finally, on corner lots, that side elevation of the home that also fronts the street, we want to make sure that that has the same architectural character as the front of the home. Process and permits, all the fun things, important stuff, but exactly, you know, how a variance gets filed and goes through the process, we made sure we're very clear on what happens there, what the review criteria are. One element that is new is the design review process. This applies to the downtown, the highway corridor overlays, or any infill sites. And essentially, it's some other guidelines that when you have that type of development, that there's an additional layer that looks at things such as building, massing, and materials to make sure that that is compatible with the surroundings. Our goal here is that, we've all seen those buildings that have popped up and you're like, did they not see the neighbors and see what's happening? And this provides the city some tools to be able to address that. So that, we're not looking for sameness. We don't want sameness, but we do want it to be cohesive and fit with the community. Administration enforcement, these are all the bodies and their duties as well as the enforcement side. Right now, you have very few options for enforcement of the ordinance. What we are introducing is a ticketing process that can be enforced through the court. Also, State law got updated about five years ago with all these other tools that we can have. And so we've got those built into the community. Having had to use this process, worked in a community where we had a ticketing process, it was nice. You get a violation, somebody's having a violation because right now, you can sue somebody to get them to stop. It's expensive, takes a long time, very ineffective. I won't name the community, but I was helping out and we had a ticketing process. We had somebody that was not doing what they were supposed to, give them a warning letter. Okay, they ignore it. Come back, give them a violation letter, which is a little fine. The fines are in Section 1.913 is where the fines are. Their first warning is very low. It gets their attention, and guess what? Something that would have been a kind of thorn in the side got resolved very easily and quickly because of that. Doesn't take much, but it's just an element to help with the enforcement. And then finally, Chapter 10, definitions, not very exciting but important, so those key terms. And so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if you have any questions outside of the meeting, feel free to contact us.
Brian, talk to me about accessory dwelling units or ADUs. What's the UDO stance on those?
Yeah, we do allow accessory dwelling units. I believe we've got, do you have the? So that's addressed in Chapter 5 on Page 4, accessory dwelling units. And so in there, we have requirements that they are permitted, that it's got to be in the same lot or parcel as the principal dwelling, and that it's got to be in the same sewage and water supply as the main house. And then you can provide an additional parking space for it. We do have the requirements that it's limited to a maximum 25% of the total living area of the principal dwelling or 800 square feet. So it keeps us from getting these sort of monstrous additions that you're like, how is that accessory when it's larger than the?
Another term for this is like mother-in-law suites.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure.
And then we do have the requirement that the owner must live on the premises in either the principal building or in the accessory dwelling. The reality is, most of your new subdivisions are coming through, probably have private covenants that would prohibit accessory dwelling units, but this would be something that would be allowed.
Brian, did you say they have to be related to the person?
Yeah, we have a provision in here that the owner of the property must live on the premises, either in the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling.
It doesn't have to be related.
Yeah, they don't need to be related to them, but they just need to be there. And what that's getting at, it's kind of dipping the toe in the water of heavy accessory dwelling units, but not sort of being a free-for-all of little rental units.
So an investor who owned a single-family house has a deedback collage that he wants to turn into another dwelling unit. He can't do that.
Not unless he lives in the, not unless he lives on the premises, yes.
Also, I know there's a change too on, concerning our parking, of how we calculate that versus going from the parking minimum to a maximum. It's kind of a big shift, so touch on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Are these just my, like, pet projects?
No, great question. So with the, the one area we do have parking minimums is residential, because that is a sensitive area. So we do have minimum parking requirements for the residential uses. And you'll see those in Chapter 3 in the permitted use table. But the rest of it, as the mayor mentioned, we've actually established parking maximums. And what this is geared towards is making sure that we're providing the right amount of parking. Traditionally, and your ordinance was no different, we overpark like crazy. And that has ramifications. I'm going to, we're trying to get too far off on a tangent, but I'm going to date myself here. But I was helping the city of Greenfield when the Super Walmart went into the city. And that was the era of the Lincoln Navigators and big excursions, big SUVs. So they had a 10-foot by 20-foot was their required parking space, which is larger than the average. Average is 9 by 18. Walmart came in to ask for a variance to shrink that parking dimension by six inches. So still larger than the average one, it cut two and a half acres of asphalt out of the parking lot. And understand, not only is that cost of the project, but in a lot, unsightly and often empty parking lot, but that has ramifications for all the stormwater runoff. All of a sudden, there's water running off that parking lot, the ponds need to be bigger, things of that nature. So what we've done here in this ordinance is we've identified maximums. So you've got flexibility, how much? Because the reality is, the businesses often know how many clients they're going to get and where, especially with the nature of how business has changed. So we've set up maximum amounts. If there's good reason, they can go above those, but again, that's something that they would have to show. The goal of that is to have right-sized parking that fits with the uses on the site.
Any other questions for Brian before, again, we do have a month to review it, right? So I know you guys are all getting it pretty fresh here, but any other questions for him before I let Ben kind of close on it?
No, sir.
Ben, any thoughts?
There was one other component I thought I was sitting back there that I wanted to just bring up too, and that's related to gas stations. So if, for those that have been on the council for a while, you'll recall that we instituted a prohibition on gas stations in our overlay districts probably a little over a year ago, just to allow us a little bit of time to just figure out how we wanted to address gas stations in the future. So in terms of what we've done is we've required them to be clustered in an intersection. So as opposed to having them spread out all along the street, they would have to be clustered in an intersection, there is a separation requirement from residential uses or residential zoning districts. They couldn't just be at an intersection, at a location in the middle of a residential area. And then there are additional requirements, and we still limit the number of pumps that are allowed. So we don't have any big, huge truck, you know, truck stops or large gas stations. So they're a little bit more like smaller neighborhood-style gas stations. But the big thing there is we wanted to try to make sure, identify where that they would go based on an intersection and then allow them to be there, but then just not spread out all the way along the corridor. And then make sure there's separation requirements from residential uses. So that was, that was one other thing that we knew we wanted to address in this one was how we wanted to do gas stations in the future. And then we also addressed EV charging in there as well because we didn't have that in, obviously, from 15 years. From 15 years ago, that wasn't a thing.
From the year I graduated high school.
Yeah, so we did add EV charging in there as well.
So Ben, that gas station that wants to go in at the corner of Indianapolis Avenue and 32. By Casey's?
Yeah.
So you're saying that they can't do that because they're not at an intersection?
So, so.
Or too close to Casey's?
There, yeah, there was one other, one other element I forgot is that clusters have to also be separated by, I think it's a quarter of a mile. So that one would be a different intersection and would be within a quarter mile of an existing gas station. So it would not be permitted there. I'm not sure of that area. There may also be residential uses scattered around there too. I can't remember on the west side of the road. But yeah, because, because it's not at the same intersection as Casey's and it's too close to it, it would not be permitted.
But theoretically, like, they could go, I'm not saying this is going to happen, this is hypothetical. They could go maybe where the Milky Way is because that's, because that's at the cluster.
So it would cluster at that same intersection, yeah.
So they can't be on the same side of the street?
It could. It would just have to go north of Casey's on the opposite side of that intersection.
Where the Zimmerman Building used to be.
Didn't you say within the same block?
Yeah, and so, and so if you looked at that, it's somewhat similar. There's a little bit of variation there. So it said they couldn't be in the same block, but there, of course, the block length is different in all other parts of the community. So there's, there's some questions there, so we cleared that up too. But now, now we're basically saying that at all four corners of intersection, you theoretically could have a gas station and then that, it would have to be separate about a quarter of a mile from another cluster of gas stations. So you just don't have them every other lot all the way down the street. And what we're going to see is, they want to be close to the interstate, primarily close to the interstates. You're going to see clusters at the interstates on our primary corridors. And then you may have a few scattering of clusters elsewhere in the community, like on North Lebanon Street, et cetera. But that's where we're primarily going to see them going.
So, so for example, right, so up on 300 North, right, there's nothing there now.
Correct.
If those homes, if those homes were not there, you could have, you could have four gas stations at 339.
You're right, yeah, on each corner, theoretically.
If there weren't homes there.
Yeah, correct.
But since they're our homes, you cannot?
You cannot.
Could you put one in the northwest corner?
Technically, no, although they already have approval for one there with their PUD ordinance. So they have the ability to put one there. What's going to happen is that somebody's going to look and see whether it's beneficial to buy out the homes at one of the other corners and go more commercial, because that obviously is going to become a much more, a much busier intersection in the next five years. So it might make sense that those homes may not want to be at those corners anymore once that intersection gets improved in four or five years from now. So you might, you might see commercial guys coming in and buying out those houses and turning it into some sort of commercial development.
The UDO essentially needs to rezone before you could have.
Yes.
It would be forcing it on neighbors that are living there that don't want to move.
Correct.
They'd have to be, they'd have to agree to sell and then move and have it rezoned and then it could.
Yeah, there would be a process to do that, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ben? Again, I know it's a long document.
I just wanted to say, I know Ben has been working on this for a really long time and his team. So I just want to say thank you, Ben, because I know it's been a whole, it's been a lot for you guys. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team because I know you guys have worked really, really hard for a really long time. So just wanted to put it out there. You guys did a good job.
We'll get this one done and then we'll start on the comp plan and get that one going too.
So again, just a reminder, we'll not, at the next meeting, we'll have it at our first meeting in February, sorry, second meeting in February. Should be the 26th, is that right?
26th, yeah.
26th. So we'll have pretty much a full month to review that. And again, if you have any questions in the meantime, I know Ben and his staff are happy to answer those for you guys too. And if there's public comments, again, feel free to reach out to your councilman or me and we can run those down for you, so. Oh yeah, sure. You're all four of the pages dropped, or you should, go ahead. Oh, they have to read it now, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Again, ordinance 2024-02 is an ordinance repealing the Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map and adopting an updated Unified Development Ordinance and Map. Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission initiated and again prepared a proposal to replace the text of the Unified Development Ordinance, including all amendments in the zoning map pursuant to Indiana Code. zoning map. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on January 16, 2024, to repeal and replace the Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map as required by Indiana law. It then forwarded on January 16, 2024, by a vote of eight to zero. It certified its recommendation to this council on January 17, 2024. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council has considered the proposed Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map, along with the recommendation of the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission, and now repeals Ordinance 07-16 and adopts the proposed Unified Development Ordinance and Zoning Map. Therefore, again, this council, as amended, repeals Ordinance 07-16, and it approves the Unified Development Ordinance that consists of about 400 pages and Exhibit A and the zoning map.
And Exhibit B. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2024-02 is round for first reading. Again, we'll take that up at our second meeting in February. Next will be SCBA discussion. Chief Batts?
Good evening again. Beginning of December, I sent out an email addressing a 2025 budget need. While it's abnormal to have a budget discussion or talk about budget needs before mid-year, this is a unique circumstance. Lebanon Fire, along with Whitestown and Zeinsville, had a committee, and they, we brought in personnel to test the new SCBA system. So that's self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the air packs that we use. Our current system is over 20 years old and out of warranty this year. So the committee got together and tested several different brands, and came together and found a spec that everyone agreed on. And right now, there's an eight-to-12-month lead time on purchasing that equipment. And I wanted to get this information out to you early to get your thoughts on it, and maybe just to get some simple heads nods that you would be entertaining this with a 2020 budget. It's a, it's a considerable amount of money. It's, the total is $363,335. We've explored leasing options, which I feel like that's the best thing for this purchase, considering how much it's going to be. We looked at purchasing through EMS, that is the supplier for SCBAs, and we've also looked at local banks, and all of you have that information. And tonight, really, I'm just asking for you to entertain the idea of us presenting this with a 2025 budget. We would like to order this in the next two weeks. We are facing a price increase April 1st. Zeinsville was able to make that purchase last year, but City of Lebanon and Whitestown are both waiting till 2024 for a 2025 purchase. I would entertain any additional questions you would have on this project.
You guys ordering with them, like, together?
I'm sorry.
Are you guys ordering with them together to try to get, like, a discount?
Yes, that's, that's the goal. And they have allowed us to use Zeinsville's purchase as well.
Oh, that's nice.
So yes, this is a discounted bulk purchasing power of the three cities and towns.
Why do you guys need to all have the same system?
Because we have automatic mutual aid. We reciprocate emergency services through Zeinsville, Whitestown, the city of Lebanon. We do not have a structure fire, house fire, and apartment fire, commercial fire in the city of Lebanon, without using personnel from Zeinsville and Whitestown, and we reciprocate that to them as well. Not a, basically not a day goes by that we don't send an engine company or a ladder company to assist on an automatic alarm or a call to service to Whitestown.
So in an emergency situation, you need to have, we all need to be on the same system working?
Yes, everybody's on the identical system, so it's interchangeable between the departments. And it's not a situation where, you know, Lebanon Fire's on MSA, Zeinsville's on Interspiro, and Whitestown's on Drager, and we're trying to figure that out. This allows everyone to be on the same system, and it streamlines safety for our firefighters and the emergency service.
Chief. You talked about leasing. So what, what's that structure looking like? I mean, ballpark, if we finance their-
There are three leasing structures, three-year, four-year, and five-year. The North Salem State Bank had the best percentage rate of 5.25%, and looking at a variety of payment scales. Five-year would be $84,500, I'm using round numbers. Four-years, four payments of $103,000. Three-year, three payments of $134,000, which we feel like that is more manageable numbers than the bulk cost of $363,000. And we know this is a lot of money, and that's why we're coming to you early, to get everybody's thoughts and opinions on that. Again, we do have an aging system. It's 20 years old. I was a part of that purchase process, and we actually applied for a state grant that's no longer available and purchased with IFD at the time.
Questions for Chief Batts from the council this time?
No.
Any direction for him? Something that we think we can-
I'm surprised your old stuff lasted 20 years.
How much, yeah. How much is the total if we made it all one time versus the three? Okay, and then the three payments. How much is that?
Say again.
How much would be the three payments?
If we go three payments, that would be $134,000.
That's three.
Times three.
Correct.
So that's more money that way.
You're paying interest. It's, it's a lease to purchase. And you have all those numbers in that email if you want to compare yearly payments and what the interest cost it is to do that. This is very similar to what we do with our fire trucks because of the amount that it costs to purchase a fire truck. So this is a very similar system to that.
Do you think, I mean, it's fair to, it's fair to guess that this would then last us another 20 years?
Yes. So it's not to say we haven't made little increment updates along the way, but it's the same technology. We still have some of those same packs in service. So this is a complete shift in technology after 20 years. Yes, and I believe that we'll get another 20 years out of the system. There's no reason why we shouldn't. And the other departments are marrying those timeframes as well.
How many total units are we looking at here?
Twenty, I mean, look, I'll get you the correct number. This is 31 units, 51 facepieces, and then just a variety of connection devices that we have to use for our rip bags and different things. But units itself, 31 units.
So is that a unit per person on your department, or is that you guys sharing them and per shift or?
We share them. So that's per seat in the apparatus. So the way fire trucks are structured, there's a driver, an officer seat, and typically three seats in the back, and that is an SCBA for each seat. And as the oncoming crew comes on, you just check in your air pack, and they're interchangeable. The only thing that you do not share is your regulator and your facepiece. So that is yours, and you take that if you get moved to a different truck, a different station, a different shift, you take those items with you.
And I, and I have to go on an earlier comment that you made, which I agree with you 1,000%. The next three to five years is gonna be fun to watch, how, how big we grow. Have you looked into the future, so to speak, to think, oh my God, we're gonna have to get X number of additional firemen, we're gonna have to get more equipment, and...
Right now, we are set up to have enough equipment to build another fire station. So we would move our current ladder crew, ladder 213 crew, to Station 13, but we're gonna need an additional six personnel to augment that staff, to be able to get the staffing levels that we need. Our goal is to have a minimum of three people on each truck, plus a battalion in service each day. And it's just a struggle to do that. Optimum, we are wanting four. We're very aware that we have a millennial-driven department. Our average age is 38, and there's, there's a lot of new, young families coming in, and so there's a lot of time off with that. And that's just a part of the ebbs and flow of managing a department our size.
Again, no action tonight, but-
No action tonight. I just wanted to familiarize this to you verbally. Again, you have the email. Is everyone comfortable with me moving on in this process and securing this purchase? We can't really do a formal vote, but I just, I need to know everyone's comfort level with me moving on with this project.
I'd say yes.
Okay.
Too. I like the fact that all three cities are using the same equipment, that you guys, you know, joining together for county. I like that.
We do not take this project lightly. We understand this is a lot of money, and the trust that you've given myself and the chiefs of Lebanon Fire, we appreciate it, and we will be good stewards of taxpayer money.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
I have one question for you. That money gonna come into that too? The lit money gonna-
That's, that's where I would envision the funding source would be for this project, yes.
That's what I was thinking.
And, and that will be your choice during the budget session of where you would like that payment to be made out of?
I think that makes the most sense, though, from a-
That's what I look at it.
Yep. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Okay, next up, Resolution 2024-01, additional NVH Personnel Services. Tanya?
Right. I've got four additionals. Ask for questions? City of Lebanon is duly-formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. It is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within budget. It has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. First one, it's Resolution 2024-01, is to appropriate funds for department slash motor vehicle, department for personnel services in the salaries, in the amount of $23,815.
And so just to clarify, do you give some background to the council? This essentially was part of the restructuring we did with the Public Works Director, and then creating the, the three different division heads essentially over it, and then also the foreman roles below them as well, too. So that's kind of, that's the, why this was necessary from a, just kind of, based on that restructuring that occurred after we adopted our budget, to kind of set us up for then this year is kind of what, so, so there wouldn't be, this is, this covers what the, the change is there.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just, there's, I was, ask if there's any questions first from the council I could, we could answer for you. Okay, this time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-01. If you have a comment, please come forward. Station name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-01. Further discussion, comments from council?
Is that funds gonna come from the motor vehicle?
Correct, yes. It'd be NVH fund. Yep, yep.
It'll not come down here.
That's, there's a one later for that one. But yeah, this is, this is out of the, this is a-
Motor vehicle.
NVH fund, correct, yes.
Motion to approve.
I would entertain a motion then.
Make a motion to approve.
Resolution 2024-01.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Second from Sierra. On fair side, aye.
Aye.
All right. Closed. Are approved. Thank you, council. All right, next is Resolution 2024-02.
Right. And this again is the same reading as before. It is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of finances of the city. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget. It has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. This resolution- Resolution is to appropriate funds to the general, to salary services and other services and charges. And I can explain that, that was for, hold on a minute. It's for police and fire, for the perf because it went- Up. A certain percentage, it went from 18 to 19.1. It went from 18 to 19.1%. And then, so that was $183,941. There was an additional in planning and zoning in the amount of $1,592. All of those are the personnel services, personal services. And then there was an additional to the general fund in the multi-parrel insurance for $52,201, as they added the street department building-
All right.
And the building on Lebanon Street, 124 to 126,119. That one was originally incorporated in the beginning of the Vegas. So the total was- That is $237,734. And again, that's the general fund.
So the, the perf on the police and fire, since it was just a, we missed the change in the perf reimbursement on the payroll side of it, so. I assume that you guys wanted to make sure we get the payments on perf? Not in the back yet?
It's all there now.
Okay. Any questions on that from the council?
Just mention for public perf is the retirement fund for the police and fire.
Well said. Okay, then. At this time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-02. If you have a comment, please come forward. Station name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-02. Any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay, we entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-02.
Motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Second from Keith. On fair side, aye.
Aye.
All right. Disposed. That is approved. Thank you, council. All right, and go, get two more, don't show me. All right, next will be additional, Resolution 2024-03. This is concerning the stormwater budget. So-
It is.
So is this, why is this council not Border Works? Is this additional?
All additional.
You gotta do the council, okay.
I know that that's-
I just, I know, I'm just, yeah, that's fine.
I'm wondering.
Maybe. We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
We knew both ways, it's okay.
This is in the same reading. City of Lebanon is duly-formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. It is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. It's necessary to appropriate additional funds. It is now determined necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All annual additional, sorry, all additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which we have served proper notice. This is-
Or is this because we didn't have a stormwater budget in page, so we needed to do it?
Right.
Okay, that's what it is.
Right, we're, we're doing-
It's our, it's our whole budget.
Adding the entire budget.
Okay, that's what it is, okay.
To our normal budget, which we've never done in the past.
Yeah, so clarify this.
Always operated-
Yeah, so stormwater is technically a utility, and so for a long time, the stormwater boards will not oversaw the stormwater, and we merged that with the Border Works. So they oversaw the stormwater utility under that purview. I guess we got feedback from Baker Tilly that our stormwater utility needed now be in our city budget. So this has already been budgeted once, right? But this is kind of the formal putting in of the stormwater budget into our city budget. So we're not spending an additional 2.4 million.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, you're like, how'd you miss out 2.4 million dollars, right? Yeah, so this is just the formal putting the actual stormwater budget into our city budget, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, yes.
It does now.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. So the, there, the totals are as listed. It's $596,815 for salaries, $1.436 million for other services and charges, and $400,000, which there's a zero missing, capital outlays for a total of $2.432 million. And again, this, we are in the process of adding this. Salaries will also become part of our budget. So there will be a new salary ordinance with all of these that I have now mentioned. We will make up a new salary ordinance, but it's just in addition of what you've seen here.
And so going forward, too, we will treat the stormwater department more like another traditional city department. And so we'll have, through the budget process, that way, line by line, all that stuff, versus where it's kind of been more of a highlight, check off through the council, versus a, this'll actually be a formal budget review.
So all the fees that come in, stormwater paid with the budget.
Yeah.
Out of any other part of the budget.
Clarify all that for everybody? Everybody feel better?
Yes.
So then I'll open the public hearing on Resolution- This time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-03. If you have any public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, keep comments at three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-03. Further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay, we entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-03, from the additional stormwater.
We have a motion to approve, there are second?
Second.
Second from Rob, on fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Close, that is approved. All right, and finally, Resolution 2024-04, lit personal services.
Last one. It is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget. It has been determined that now it is necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, which we have served notice. This resolution is coming out of the lit public police and fire, and this again is for?
Perf.
Perf slash impurs, whichever one you want to call it, for the increase from the 18% to the 19.1% in the amount of 62,215.
And just for our new council members, so we have, we've kept our, the lit public safety, or public safety lit separate for new public safety expenses, so we have new employees that are paid out of that lit fund, it doesn't get all mixed together, so they're kind of kept as separate budgets, so we making sure that all goes to public safety. So like, that's why, so you have, you have, we have firefighters and police in our general fund, and we also have firefighters and police in our, the lit public safety fund, so, so that's what we're doing here, so that's. Okay, any questions on that from anybody? Okay. This time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-04. Any public comments, please come forward, station name for the record, and keep comments at three minutes if possible. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-04. Further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay, we entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-04.
Motion to approve, there are second?
Second.
Second from Sandra, on fair side, aye?
Aye.
Disposed, that is approved, thank council, and apologize for the cleanup, I know Tanya's had a bit of a headache there, so I appreciate your work on that too, to get that all straightened up, and good to go.
Good to go.
Okay, is there any other new business from the council?
Not from me.
Okay, move on to claims, we entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims, there are second?
Second.
Second from Keith, on fair side, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, claims are approved. Any announcements or discussion?
Sign the paperwork.
Yeah, claims are up here now, yep, so you need to sign the claims, they're right there, with that. Okay, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.